Okay. I state your name.
I, Jenna Casper Bloom.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Impartially and justly perform.
Impartially and justly perform.
All the duties of the office of member of the Township Committee of East Amwell.
All the duties, I'm sorry.
All the duties of the office.
Of the office.
Of member of the Township of East Amwell Committee.
As a member of the Township of the East Amwell Committee.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Can I please have a nomination for Mayor of the Township of East Amwell for the year 2025?
I would like to nominate Dante DePiero to be Mayor.
Are there any other nominations? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Ms. Enton?
Yes.
Mr. Nardi?
Yes.
Ms. Casper Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Dendis?
Yes.
Mayor DePiero?
Yes.
I, Dante DePiero.
I, Dante DePiero.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States and in this state.
And to the governments established in this state and the United States.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform.
And I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform.
All the duties of the office of Mayor.
All the duties of the office of Mayor.
Of the Township of East Amwell.
Of the Town. Of the Township of East Amwell to the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Can I please have a nomination for Deputy Mayor of the Township of East Amwell for the year 2025?
I'd like to nominate Mike Dendis.
Are there any other nominations? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Ms. Enton?
Yes.
Mr. Nardi?
Yes.
Ms. Casper Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Dendis?
Yes.
Mayor DePiero?
Yes.
Thank you, Linda. Good job with everything. Doing great.
I, Michael Dendis.
I, Michael Dendis.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States and in this state.
And to the governments established in the United States and in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform.
I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform.
All the duties of the office of Deputy Mayor of the Township Committee. Of East Amwell. All the duties of the office of Deputy Mayor of the Township of East Amwell.
Of the Township of East Amwell.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Congratulations to the three of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any remarks?
Sure. I don't know if anyone wants to go before me. I want to talk about some of our priorities that we've done and where we're going, but does anyone want to say something first?
I just want to thank the committee for humble, it's humbling, but I appreciate you guys nominating me again. Thank you for that.
Thank you for your good work.
I just wanted to thank the residents of East Amwell for their confidence in reelecting me to this position. We've done a lot of good work these past two years, and I'm looking forward to, you know, doing the same in the next three. So, thank you to the residents.
Congratulations, Jenna. Thanks for your good work.
Thank you.
Would you like to say something?
I think we did a great job last year, and let's keep going forward with all that positive energy and looking forward to 2025.
Yep. Amen, Jim.
Yeah, I agree. I think we've done a lot of really good work, and I'm looking forward to working with the group in 2024. Or 2025. Backward, turn forward.
Right.
Continue with 2024, but yeah, thanks to both of you. You've done a lot, and I think, I think the residents have benefited from it. So I just want to go over some of the priorities. You know, we've talked about some of these things before, but I think it's bears repeating, and especially at the start of the year, I think it's always good to look back a little bit. And also think about, you know, the path that we're charting going forward. So some of our key priorities are the following, and I'll start with the most important one, which is keeping it rural. You know, for the type of community that we are, that's our main goal. And we've done that in a number of ways. From farmland preservation, you know, we preserved additional farmland over the past two years, but also ordinance revisions. We reviewed and revised town ordinances, you know, make sure to close loopholes on unwanted development. And in affordable housing, you know, we've monitored the state imposed obligations that we have and have taken action so that we can have immunity against builders being able to come in and to force unwanted development into our town. You know, keeping it rural takes constant vigilance, and it's something that's always at the top of our list, so I start with that one. The second thing, which is also important to us, very important, is, you know, staying tight on taxes. We all have bills to pay, costs are high, and we know our residents want us to be mindful of costs. And we are extremely aware of this and take that to heart with regard to every issue that we look at. You know, on the spending side, we've taken a very frugal approach when we do our budgeting. In terms of costs, we've reduced costs on a number of things going in the past, and we will going forward. You know, by one example, we reduced the cost that we pay for the construction department functions. You know, it was a matter of us doing our periodic reevaluation, seeing what services we are getting, and making sure to maximize value for our residents. We've also gotten a number of grants, and this is, you know, critically important to make sure that our dollars are going as far as they can. We've gotten multiple grants for road maintenance and repair. We've gotten grants for park improvements. And as a result of this, in 2023, we kept our budget completely flat. And in 2024, we avoided all but minor increases to deal with inflationary costs, added costs from COVID, increase in state health benefit costs, all those things which were so costly to municipalities all around our nation. But we're able to do that because every time we think about a decision, we think about not only good for our residents, but keeping costs in check. And I'd say the third most important item is, you know, promoting transparency and good government. And so for us, our approach to all issues is putting a premium on giving residents notice of the issues and potential town action. And then encouraging involvement and then listening, which is a really critical element, to residents' comments. You know, by way of example, when Rainbow Hill Preserved was announced as open by New Jersey Conservation Foundation, a number of residents on North Hill Road expressed some concerns over traffic. So we held a hearing before the Township Committee. We invited residents in. We invited the folks in the environmental group. And in that way, we got residents' concerns addressed. Something that we want you all to know is we listen very carefully to what our residents are saying so that we can do our best to try to meet those concerns. Some other examples, I think, of transparency and good government are, you know, the Grityard. We still have to figure out what we can do with the Grityard. Some of you know new regulations from the state have made our Grityard operations much more expensive and potentially not feasible in the way that we're providing them now. And we know that this is a benefit service that our residents like. And so we started, as you know, engaging the public in knowing what's going on, what our limitations are given state regulation, and then encouraging them to be involved with us in pursuing a public process to seek solutions, again, to meet our residents' needs. And this is more of a small thing about transparency, but I think it's emblematic of the approach. When we had, you know, not a very easy way, I think, for residents to come and speak, Al went out and found that great podium right there so that, you know, again, people can come, they can go right up to the microphone, they can be heard by all of us. And for anybody watching on our webcast, they can hear clearly what's happening because, you know, resident involvement in government is really important, and it's very important to us. Some other things I'll just run through quickly, but I think they're in the category of promoting welfare for our residents, which is something that's also something that undergirds everything that we do. You know, character of the community is really important. And, you know, we were able to demolish the Kleinschmidt House, which folks had come in and told us was an eyesore and a public safety concern. And moreover, we're able to do that with no cost to residents. So that's something that we're proud of and the kind of thing that we want to continue with. Traffic calming, again, residents are telling us that, you know, folks are speeding through our downtown. And, you know, that block unfortunately is one where State Road meets the County Road, so we've got, you know, outside actors and regulators, and we can't just do what we want to do to protect it. So we spent considerable efforts, but we've gotten the county and the state fully engaged. We've got some traffic calming sensors out there to take down data. We'll have more data, and we've already prepared a plan that we're pushing to our partners at the state and county for, you know, restriping to make it safer, safety signage, maybe flashing signs, speed limit restrictions. You know, the kind of things that our residents have told us is important and something that we'd like to bring to fruition. You know, road improvement and maintenance, Willisowitz Road, North Hill Road, Mountain Road, we've done improvements on all those roads. We have more to come. Clausen House, we're protecting that resource by repairing leaks in the basement, power outages. We got tools from the utilities now so that our residents can hear and obtain from the internet more accurate information about the outages that they have, when it's supposed to go back online. OEM, we now have not only a director but a deputy director. We've developed a plan for providing more services for residents when they experience emergencies because, you know, we feel that's the kind of commitment that we want to our residents, especially at a time when they need some kind of assistance during an emergency. You know, when, speaking of emergency services, when issues arose about, you know, whether our local squad had the capability to, you know, cover all of our residents' needs if they need to call an ambulance, again, we put that on an agenda. We invited the stakeholders. We've gotten data, and so we're going to continue to watch that issue because for us, public safety is the paramount importance. And, you know, we know our residents need to be safe. They call for an ambulance, we have to have somebody immediately able to respond. Couple other things just quickly, property tax payments. You know, we have instituted an auto pay system so that residents, you know, won't forget necessarily, but also have an easier way to have an automatic payment made. On Clausen Park, you know, not only are we working on Clausen House, but we're trying to get improvements to repairs to the tennis courts. And we actually obtained a grant to do that. We're still trying to make it all pencil out, but again, you know, we're aware that Clausen House is a tremendous resource, and we want that to be something that all of our residents can enjoy. You know, and finally, on the historic front, you know, we have 150th anniversary celebration of the United States coming up in 2026. We're already involved in doing some planning for that. We have a wonderfully historic area here in East Amwell, and so that merits being part of it. We've got, you know, our historical preservation committee who can engage and teach us about our own area that we're so proud of. And finally, we're working on measures to try to encourage historic preservation in our town because that's important. So those are some of the things that have occupied our attention. We're going to continue to work on those, you know, because again, we want to keep it rural, stay tight on taxes, we want transparency in government and overall to serve our residents to the best of our ability. So continue to come, continue to provide your suggestions and comments.
I think it's 250 years.
250. If I didn't say that in my remarks, what Mike said.
I think he said 1/5, and I was doing the math in my head. I'm like, I think it's 250.
Yes, 250 is right. Thank you. Okay. So let's move on to item eight, motion to confirm Township Committee appointments A through D. Let me read those briefly for everyone. Board of Health, Tracy Clarulicio, Larry Tash, David Wang Iverson, Leonardo Di Candia, Juliette Leonard. Recycling Committee, Susan Kedlick. Agriculture Advisory Committee, Francis Gavigan, Bill Dufasi, Erica Johansson, Jamal Kadri, John Perrines. Historic Preservation, Francis Gavigan, Beth Hussein. May I have a motion to confirm these appointments?
So moved.
Make a second that.
Okay, second.
Ms. Enton?
Yes.
Mr. Nardi?
Yes.
Ms. Casper Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Dendis?
Yes.
Mayor DePiero?
Yes. Okay. Those nine. Item 10 on the agenda, motion to confirm mayoral appointments A through E. Reading that briefly, Planning Board, Class 1 would be me as the mayor's designee. Class 3, elected official Al Nardi. Class 4, residents Mike McGovern or Michael McGovern, Richard Cadenacci. Environmental Commission, Leo Rommel. Parks and Recreation Committee, Emily Mastro Pietro. Ringo's Village Advisory Committee, Kim Enzinger and Jennifer Frank. Emergency Management, Deputy OEM Coordinator, Michael Graznoski. And then you can all read about the liaisons. May I have a motion to confirm these appointments?
I can make a motion.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Enton?
Yes.
Mr. Nardi?
Yes.
Ms. Casper Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Dendis?
Yes.
Mayor DePiero?
Yes. So for item 11, at this time, for any appointees who are present today to be sworn into office, maybe if you could.
There's only one here.
Is there one? All right, looks like Rich.
Two. And Emily?
Oh, good, two, thank you. Come right forward, and we'll get you sworn.
Okay. So.
Okay, we got Jamal too.
So will you please raise your right hand and repeat after me? I, state your name.
I.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States and in this state.
And to the governments established in the United States and in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform.
And I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform.
All the duties of the office I am about to assume.
All the duties of the office I am about to assume.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Do you have oaths on that table over there? If you want to sign them now, you're welcome to do that.
Well, thank you all for your service, and for those who came today, thank you for attending. Okay, item 13 on the agenda, resolutions. May I have a motion to approve Resolutions 2025-01 through 2025-38?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Extention? None?
Ms. Enton?
Yes.
Mr. Nardi?
Yes.
Ms. Casper Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Dendis? Mayor DePiero?
Yes.
Okay, at this time, without objection, the meeting is open to the public. Anybody wish to speak at the time? Yes, sir, please come right up. Just give us your name for the record. Okay.
Terry Golda, 49 John Ringo Road. Now, it seemed like today would be a perfect day to discuss this. In last month's VIP, it had something that the committee discussed, a sidewalk ordinance may be needed requiring residents to clear snow from sidewalks in front of their properties. Now, I've lived at 49 John Ringo Road for 44 years. When the sidewalks were installed, the residents wanted a kind of a buffer strip between the street and the sidewalk. And we said, no, we can't do that. The budget doesn't allow, so we have to put the sidewalk right next to the road. And at that time, they said, we will not have an ordinance for you to clear the snow. Because when the county snowplows come along, they push this big icy mess onto the sidewalk, and it is a lot of times impossible to clear. So I think this would put a real burden onto the people who have sidewalks in front of their house.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate the comment. We're only starting to look into it, and your comment's very helpful. Thank you, sir. Okay, any other member of the public wish to be heard at this time? Yes, please come up.
Rick Wolf, 21 Ryanirson Road. I just wanted to share with the committee this evening the perspective of someone who is now just a plain old resident regarding what I've seen over the last year take place at this committee. First of all, you started 2024 in a very difficult position with respect to the budget. Costs were going up significantly, high inflation. And through a great deal of effort, you managed for 2024 to keep an almost flat budget, which I said at the time I thought was a phenomenal accomplishment. I know how much work goes into that. And from the perspective of a resident, that effort was greatly appreciated. I think you guys did a spectacular job with the budget. For years, we'd been trying to get money to demolish the Kleinschmidt House that I saw on Old York Road. You managed to get a grant, and you managed to get the building demolished at no cost to the residents at all. That I thought also was a real accomplishment. Third, the West Amwell Construction Office, or just the issue of who would be our construction official. You did a thorough analysis. You opened up for a public hearing. You took input from the residents. You managed to renew our contract with West Amwell and on a more favorable basis than our prior contract, which I also thought was a great accomplishment. Ambulance service. That has been a problem for years. I know Mike put a lot of effort into that, and you worked out an arrangement with a neighboring ambulance corps to provide much-needed service in a manner that I think will turn out to be very cost-effective for the residents. And I know that took a lot of work, an awful lot of work, and it was just great how you guys handled that. You got our own zoning officer, something we've been wanting for years, that a lot of residents, myself included, thought was very important. And you did it on a very cost-effective basis, and that was greatly appreciated by myself and a lot of other residents. Health insurance. That's a cost that is going up significantly for all of us. You managed to move us into a program that will be very cost-effective for the residents of East Amwell without sacrificing benefits for the employees. That I thought was a real accomplishment. The Clausen Park Grants. Clausen Park needs work. It's been around for a long time. Things need to be improved. The fact that you're able to raise a significant amount of money, including recently a $75,000 grant, is a great accomplishment. And these grants don't just fall out of the sky, and you don't just get them by snapping your finger. A lot of work has to go into applying for these grants and getting them. The traffic calming plan. That has been a big issue in the village for years, the traffic situation. You're handling this in a very smart way in that you're not trying to eat the elephant in one bite. If you did try to do that, I think you'd be remarkably unsuccessful. It's very difficult to move NJDOT. They move like a glacier, you know, in inches at a time. And had you tried to solve all the problems at once, I think you would have gotten nowhere with NJDOT. You've taken a very prudent approach, which is you'll eat the elephant one bite at a time. And so it will take some time to get to where we need to be, but I have no doubt that with this leadership, you will get us there. The transparency of this committee has been admirable. It's really nice when you can sit here and watch how the sausage is made. It's not just served up here, take it or leave it. It's great to see the interaction. I don't feel like decisions are pre-baked. You seek input from the residents. You debate among yourselves. I wish our East Amwell School Board of Education behaved the same way, and hopefully that will change with the four new members, but you are the model of transparency, unbelievably transparent. There is nothing hidden. And I also have to commend Linda because whenever I ask to see things, I get them with remarkable speed. I file an OPRA request. I've literally had things within hours of filing the OPRA request. And I know she has a lot of things to do, and I only file sparingly on things that I really want to see. But Linda, you've done a great job with that, and that's just part of transparency. Your patience with residents, including myself, you're incredibly patient. Very polite, very respectful. Certainly one of my shortcomings. So to watch you all in that mode, it's really refreshing to see that from a governing body. And finally, I think your most valuable accomplishment is, as I understand it, you've reappointed Frank, who has been an absolutely spectacular municipal attorney. I worked with Frank when I sat at the dais. I think the world of Frank, and I'm really happy that you reappointed him. So, you know, I just wanted to say that I, you know, I took my time, the six years I spent at the dais very personally. the six years I spent at the dais very personally. If you care about what you do, this becomes part of your life. And the residents' problems become your problems. And you really want to help people. And you really exemplify that. I feel like the Township Committee is in great hands right now. You all have really hit your stride. Things are happening, and I just wish you the best for twenty twenty-five. And I just want to say on behalf of Kathy and myself, and of course, the four Chihuahuas, thanks for all you've done. We greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
I just have one question. What do you got on it? What do you got? Share.
He has pictures of the PD.
Oh.
Okay. Seeing no one else, no ones going twice. Okay. Without objection, we're closed to the public at this time. So I guess we're open to Township Committee members. I wanted to start off just by saying, you know, thank you to Linda. Linda, thank you for everything you've done all through last year and the considerable work you did to put together everything for, you know, the reorg meeting and then the regular meeting we're going to have after this. So I really appreciate it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And Frank, the same way. Frank, you've been an invaluable advisor to us on all legal matters during the year. And, you know, as an attorney, I know how important that is because we're all here trying to do the job the best way that we can. But, you know, especially on legal matters, having that lens to interpret what the law says and also give us advice on recommended courses of actions that serve us and serve the township is very much appreciated. So thank you.
I second that because I've, we've had a lot of communication in the last two years, and he's got nothing on me, I can tell you that. And I'm saying that from the heart. He walked me through, you know, a lot of processes here, and I appreciate that.
I appreciate you. I appreciate your confidence. I appreciate the remarks, Rick. And the one thing I could say about this committee is the professionalism is top-notch, the collegial attitude and the cooperation. And you don't find that in a lot of other towns. So you're all to be commended on that, and the residents are the ones that benefit.
Thank you. Well, thank you for that. I mean, I will say that, you know, for residents who don't know this, you know, we try to divide and conquer. All of the five members of this body, you know, volunteer to dig in deeper on particular issues because, you know, although we're volunteers, you know, that kind of effort is what it takes to follow up with residents, to investigate issues that are out there, to come up with solutions, and then be able to present it so all of us can try to use our collective efforts to do things. So, you know, that's the other thing I wanted to say for the four of you. I appreciate that. All of you have worked really hard, and we'll keep working hard in twenty twenty-five.
Well, yeah, what I would share on that also is one reason why I wanted to renominate Dante is the stuff comes into Dante as the mayor, and he spins it out to us. That kind of worked really well. So I'm sure it's extra time that you're putting in, and it's appreciated. Just writing up the remarks for the meeting is, it's a lot of work, and it's not, it doesn't go unnoticed for sure.
Thank you. Comments of anyone else? Okay. So we're through item fourteen. So sixteen, may I have a motion to adjourn the reorganization meeting? And for the public, anybody wishes to say we're having our regular meeting to kick off our business after this? But do I have a motion to adjourn the reorganization meeting?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So that concludes our reorg meeting. Thank you, everyone, for attending. If you're heading out before the next meeting, and we'll pick up with this momentarily. Altogether, the regular meeting of the East Amwell Township Committee.
Adequate notice of this meeting of the Township Committee has been provided by a notice sent to the official newspapers of the township, posted to the township website, posted on the bulletin board of the municipal building, and filed with the township clerk as required by law on December twentieth, twenty twenty-four. Ms. Casper Bloom?
Here.
Ms. Enton?
Here.
Mr. Nardi?
Here.
Mr. Dentis?
Here.
Mayor DePiro?
Here. If everyone will rise for the.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, let's go right to item six on the agenda. We are open to the public for items that are on the agenda, if anyone would like to address that. Okay, seeing no one, without objection, we're closed to the public. Approval of minutes. Does anyone have any?
We're carrying February.
We're carrying? I'm sorry.
Sorry.
That's okay. You've had a lot going on. I completely understand. Thank you. So we're carrying. Okay, so let's get to item eight then, am I right, Linda?
Yes.
Special discussions. Okay, cleanup day. Is that you, Mike, to talk cleanup day? So we want, this is an issue we wanted to.
I have some numbers.
I have the numbers.
To first of all, let the public know about, because we have a decision to make on whether we wish to have such a day this year. So Mike, I know, did some research to find out what it costs.
I'd say Jenna did this research.
So we didn't do cleanup day in twenty twenty-four, as the Township Committee may remember, because in twenty twenty-three, we took a hit that we, the town spent about forty-five hundred, and we brought in, like, nineteen hundred. So we did operate at, I mean, that's the significant loss, I think, which is why we decided to take the break. So I think what we discussed last year and what we need to examine this year is whether we want to try and bring it back this year and see if it brings in more money. So we're closer to like a break-even point. Or if we just want to not do the Township Cleanup Day at all. And, you know, residents have other options of places to go in the county if they need to get rid of things. Or I do remember that the garbage service too, if you call them, they will come and pick up like large items as well and stuff. So I think that's what we just kind of need to examine since it's time to think about the twenty twenty-five budget already.
Do you get a lot of calls? Do you get any calls?
We get some calls.
I got a resident asking about, do we used to do shredding, paper shredding?
The county does shredding. They have a shred day.
They have a lot of shred days.
I thought they did. A resident.
I mean, I don't know, maybe before my time, they did shredding here. We used to have a day in Branchburg where we did it.
The only thing I've been asked about is shredding.
Yeah. But the county does it if they need that service.
Working with the recycling committee, that's one of my committees. They, you know, they are asking about it. They are aware of the, let's call it a deficit, I guess, and a cost. I guess you look at it more as the service they provide, I guess, right? I mean. Yes.
We did a shredding several years ago.
Is that free or is there a cost or something like that?
The township decided to purge old records. We went to the state and got approval to purge the files because down in the basement, it was just getting too full.
Right.
So we were bringing in a shredding company because there's a procedure that you have to follow to shred those records.
Right.
And we figured since we're bringing them in and paying for it, let's open it up to the residents too, because it would be no additional cost.
Okay, so that might be where the residents.
That's what we did. It was once since I've been here that we did it, and it was an offshoot that we opened it to the residents.
So me personally, that's the only thing I've been asked about in the community, shredding, if we're doing shredding. But I checked our website. I couldn't find anything. I didn't think we did it part of this cleanup day. Again, working with the recycling committee, there's, you know, they're mindful of the cost and I don't know how we could guarantee the break-even, you know? But it is, people need a place to get rid of their junk. And sometimes I feel if you don't give it to them, it's going to end up roadside, right? Like, I understand, at least a picture was sent to me from social media. Somebody dumped a couch on the corner of, like, Sandra and Old York. I don't know if that's been picked up yet. I didn't, I came home and it was dark tonight.
It's pure abuse property.
Yeah, it's on, they dumped it on private property. But then I wonder, like, is that, should they be the ones that have to pay to clean it up? Like, it's unfair to them. So it's a catch-22 a little bit. So I do think there needs to be an outlet for people to dump. But maybe there's options. Like, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna, yeah.
Like, maybe there's an option of, like, just bringing in, like.
Well, the county does have something. Like, I know before, like, I had a big couch in a, like, an old bureau that was no good, and just put it in a pickup, drove to the county, and they charged, I can't remember what it is, like thirty-five bucks or something, and you just were able to offload the pickup, and then that was it. So.
See, I know something like that, like the garbage companies. Like, I've done that before. And something like that would probably cost like seventy-five bucks, maybe more. You know, everything goes out. But so we charged about the same here for that, but we don't have the volume. I don't know.
I don't think we charge that much.
Well, isn't the trailer like seventy-five bucks? Pickup's like fifty?
I think the trailer is, and I think a car's forty-five.
Yeah, so, I mean, it can only fit so much of a car. So it's, I don't think we charge over a hundred for a trailer.
No, nothing's over a hundred.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, so metal recycling, I understand. And Mike, you could correct me if I'm wrong. That's a free service that we can probably provide. Would that be accurate?
I should provide, like, I do for items.
Okay. Then electronics cleanup, that's a free service that we can provide according to recycling.
And the county does that, too.
They do hazmat and they do electronics. Because I'm sure everybody has a TV to throw in after Christmas, right?
Old gasoline, oil.
Yeah, TVs are like, yeah. So, I mean, that's a different. I don't think East Amwell ever dabbled with hazmat cleanups that I know of, but do you guys?
The county does.
I know the county does for sure, but I don't think locally this town ever did that. Some of the larger towns probably have oil dump-offs and stuff. But I don't think this town ever did that. So most of the services that we were providing at that cleanup day are in the community already and available. And then if you had to go private to use your own garbage company, I mean, there are people, I've worked it, and were people coming with large pickup trucks, right? So that's going to cost more than the seventy-five bucks. So there's probably a value to that. So I don't know. What do you guys think? I mean, consider it's probably going to be a loss, a losing cost, right? So last year, we talked about maybe merging with another town, but that kind of died on the vine. A lot of towns seem to use a permit system. This is one of the things I've been looking at, talking about with Jason and other, he's been talking to his colleagues in other towns. And just to make up a number and an example, you have to go in and register with, like, Linda, and she'll give you a punch card, and you pay twenty-five, fifty dollars, whatever the number is, and you could come and dump so many times. That seems to be something that most of the smaller towns are doing.
They do that because it's frequently abused. And you have businesses and you have people from out of the town that are using it. And I know for the smaller towns that offer bulk pickup, some of them I represent, they've had to do away with just opening it up because you'll see refrigerators in front of someone's house, you know, every time, you know, because people bring them from other towns. So policing it and making sure it's just residents and not people from neighboring communities or just businesses taking advantage of the cheap disposal is really the only way to keep it.
So it's a catch-22, right? We want to provide a service where stuff doesn't end up roadside.
Well, I believe last year when we were debating this, you know, publicly at the Township Committee, we decided to, you know, ask people to let us know by contacting Linda on the internet, on the, our own township website, if they had a big need. And I think we only had two people, if memory serves, say that they had an interest in having the services. Do we want to, you know, give folks an opportunity again to let us know if, you know, if they've been saving up because they didn't do it last year or have a great need for some other reason?
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, because to find out if there's a need. Because if we're talking, because if there's a need, then we have the ability to perhaps break even.
Right.
If there's not a need, then we're providing the service and we're losing money.
So, I mean, just doing rough math, if it's nineteen hundred that we brought in, and let's just say everybody paid the max amount, which they didn't.
So just for, so it's twenty-five for a car, thirty-five for a SUV, forty-five for a pickup truck, and then trailers and trucks are twenty-five to seventy-five. The township representative gets to decide the cost.
Yeah, I like that.
Yeah, Linda charged me full price for the wicker couch and my trailer and my pickup.
Some towns offer the service just for seniors.
They just argue with you when you're trying to tell them how much.
Hillsborough has it just for seniors.
Oh, that's an interesting thought.
So, I mean, rough numbers, it looks like maybe less than fifty people used it. You know? I got forty-two point two if I used a middle number. I mean, I know that's not a science, but that just gives you an idea. It's not affecting hundreds, right? But to the forty-two people, it might be a big deal. And I get the need because I have stuff I want to get rid of too. I'm just debating how I'm going to do it. I don't know. What do you think?
We had cleanup day, I remember previous cleanup days, like, probably twenty twenty-two, twenty-one, like, we were breaking even or even making money, and then we had, like, two years of significant drop-off. So I think that was our concern, too, that people really got rid of everything, and now there's not that much stuff left to get rid of. But I agree, I think it's a good idea to give another, relist it for next month and see what people say.
Okay.
When did I like to do this? Like, March eighth?
April.
It's like a spring cleanup, right?
Yeah, but they probably need at least sixty days to plan it, right?
So I'm thinking if we ask them now, at least that'll give a chance to get some feedback.
And how are you going to ask? Like, website?
So I think, I mean, we can announce here and then ask Linda to put, you know, a notice up on our flash, right? So that, so, I mean, I guess I'll officially say for anybody listening in or here today, you know, if you have a burning need for us to have a cleanup day, you know, realize that this is a cost to us and to taxpayers. But if we get a lot of folks who need this, it may be worth it. So, you know, let us know. Linda, what do you recommend is the best way for folks to notify? You've got that comment section, right, on the website where folks can go in?
Yeah, they can comment under general comments, complaints. They can call us. They can, I could put something out on Facebook, on our Facebook page, asking if there's an interest.
What works best for you? Because I don't want you to be all loaded up just responding. But, you know, is it best for people just to go on the website if they can and put their comment?
Yeah, they may not want to go through all that effort, though.
But for the ten percent that don't want to do that, they're welcome to call you. But, I mean, if folks know they can do it, that'll be like a written thing you could review. Or you tell me whatever works best.
I mean, whatever they want to do. If they want to call, that's fine. We can have Pam field calls.
Okay. So if folks would either go on the website to the bottom there where there's a place to, you know, send a comment to the township and put miscellaneous and send it there, Linda or Pam will review that. Or if you'd prefer to call, you could call Pam, our deputy clerk, and let her know. And then you guys can compile that, and we'll discuss it again. Or if folks wish, you know, show up next month's Township Committee meeting and tell us.
So this is another example I pulled up. You guys know what a dumpster bag is? They sell them at Home Depot. They, they cost thirty dollars for the bag plus a hundred and seventy-five for pickup. So we are definitely a bargain at seventy-five bucks. And that's, it's thirty, they're not, no bigger than a small trailer. So there is a value for folks that want to use it, for sure. So let's see what happens, kind of feedback. But I would only suggest that we be in a position to make an answer in February because I think he needs Mark to line up everything. And I would guess is what I recall them talking about.
Well, we wouldn't have to do it in April either.
That's true.
I mean, if he needs more time, we decided to go forward with it.
I guess April, people like, what I call spring cleanup.
Right, right.
So, but yeah, that's true. You're right.
Say it again.
You're right.
Jenna is right, everybody. She often is, yes. So folks will let us know if it's a burning issue, and we'll take that under advisement then. Okay. Thank you for that discussion, Jenna and Mike. So going to item ten on the agenda. So we had thought about doing an introduction of the historic preservation ordinance. Some members of the Township Committee have gotten some comments, and so we want to go through those first before we introduce. So I'm going to hold that item tonight, and we'll review the info we've been provided or asked about so far before we go forward.
So let me ask you this, Mayor. What's the best way for us as a group to iron out our concerns with the ordinance? Like, how do we, should I come to you with my concerns?
Yeah, sure. Why don't you do that? Well, that way I can collect them because I think Jenna got some comments, too. So, and again, this is, you know, procedurally, I think it's helpful to try to put things together in a semblance that, so we know what folks are concerned about before we introduce. Even if we have an ability to make adjustments later, it's always good, I think, to plan by getting, you know, orient as much as possible first, so.
Because I know you were planning board, you were part of working on it, right?
Yes. So I'm more familiar than most are. But there are some other folks who are just, you know, I guess, what, two days ago? When did we put it out? Or when did we put our notice out to the public?
To, for what?
With the document.
Oh, we posted it?
Yeah.
Friday before I left.
Friday, right? So, yeah, I think, so I think some members of the public saw it on Friday and had some comments, so.
So you're just sharing and speaking with people. I mean, I got some feedback, too, and I think it's important that I share at least.
Yeah, why don't you let me? Yeah, why don't you let me know, and then we'll have a document that we can put up there as the straw person, and then we'll, we'll have a conversation with the public and everything.
Okay.
Yeah, and we have, um, the historic preservation reorg meeting is on Wednesday. So if you have some comments, you know, be together, then I can, I can share that with the committee.
So who, let me ask you, and I I don't wanna take up too much time, cause Jenna's gonna kick me, but who writes this, this is written professionally, this is written by members of the planning board?
So this came out of the the planning board through a whole process and it was reviewed by planning board and historic preservation, so lots of folks have been trying to you know, put it together, I know I went through and tried to consolidate some things to to put it in a framework where we could all look at it and have a public look at it, so. So this, I mean, this, yeah. Sure if I'd say professional or not, but it was, it was, you know, a group process to try to, you know, deal with something, you know, cause historic preservation is important. You know, some of the issues are important too, if, you know, we wanna make sure residents know we're not trying to impose things on them, we wanna make it workable, so all those things.
Yeah, and I think some of the issues, you know, there, it's always easier to resolve it when you're looking at the red line strikeout because the the historic preservation committee was very careful, there was an ordinance, it was to clarify some points. It was not to go crazy and make very, you know, restrictive requirements, it's not there to make it hard on residents who, you know, have a property, you know, it's it's public facing versus some other towns, it's the whole house, it's inside the house, it's all of that, so it was, you know, it's it's, it's a, it's a good ordinance, um, they did a good job putting it together.
Probably a need, but I, you know, there's some things that popped up to me that I'm like and I'll, I mean, I'll share one thing about like entering the house to take photographs before somebody demolishes the house, like I don't or or property or barn, like I don't know that we have the business in the house, like what right do we have to go in the house, so those are the things my my mind comes from, that maybe got overlooked when it was being built.
Well, that was the committee trying to document, and I don't think it can be, uh, it may not be a requirement, it may be a request. And I would have to go back, I mean, Tam would know better how specific that was.
But but I mean, a- as you know, with all ordinances and things that we take up, we try to get something that's trying to address the major concerns, and then we have all those things that come up for discussion, so I appreciate everybody thinking about it and uh.
Cause I, I feel there's a lane for this, right, but I just, I'm careful with this stuff.
Yep.
Okay.
Every ordinance has, you know, uh, when I did work with the legislature in in New Jersey, uh, they used to say unintended consequences, you know, everything has an effect and it might affect something if you don't think of it.
Well, you have the other issue, you have Easthamal enforcement, things like that, we don't have, you know, it's a little hard.
Well, I think the whole idea is, is, uh, is not supposed, is not supposed to create any mandates, so, but those are things to look at, so.
All right, so you and I'll talk and.
Yeah, and if anyone else has things, and again, the idea is to get something out and with our transparent approach, get it out there, have everybody look at it, and then we'll discuss all the issues.
So we're gonna table that one?
We're gonna table that one, yep.
Frank, do we need a motion?
Motion to table.
No, we don't, because we haven't introduced. So if you remember, we were gonna introduce, but we were gonna be timed out because of December, January, so today was just whether we were gonna introduce, if that changes your opinion, I don't know if it does.
No, if it's not out for introduction, I think you could just agree to table it.
Yeah, cause that way we'll take up introduction next time, that's my understanding. Uh, okay, eleven, uh, ordinance twenty-five zero-two, first reading, Linda, if you could read that by title.
An ordinance amending the municipal code of the township of Easthamwell, chapter thirty-five, salaries and compensation.
Okay, so, uh, we'll go over this, uh, again, we, uh, we had an issue, I think, last time, right, Linda, where we were trying to introduce at the end of the year, but we didn't have two meetings and.
Yeah, so we couldn't adopt.
It's a legal matter, you can't, you have to do both the introduction and the approval in the same session. Uh, so we're reintroducing this as a reminder, the reason for this is, um, the ordinance would amend the twenty-five dollar per hour salary for clerical staff for the rabies clinic to thirty-five dollars per hour, this is a, you know, one time a year event. Uh, but we wanted to make sure the employees weren't making less on their regular salaries, uh, when they were coming in, in fact, to work on a Saturday to do the rabies clinic. Also, the rabies clinic, rabies clinic's hours have been decreased by two hours from, uh, to two hours from three. Um, so, uh, actually, the increase is 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 gonna be incredibly small, but we thought fair for the folks that are coming into work. Uh, also, taxpayers should know that, uh, the cost of, uh, of this comes out of the licensing fee, so you know, I have a dog, so I license the dog, uh, part of that fee goes to pay, um, the fee for the employees to do this, but we wanted to make sure the amount was fair. Uh, also, the ordinance amends some of the minimum wages for, uh, other positions, uh, and that's because minimum wage was increased as of January first, I'd also adjust the DPW superintendent's salary range. So, uh, may I have a motion to introduce ordinance twenty-five dash zero-two with a public hearing date of February thirteenth, twenty twenty-five?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second that.
All right, thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all in favor, no against, no abstention? Okay, item twelve, consent agenda. May I have a motion to approve resolutions twenty twenty-five dash thirty-nine through twenty twenty-five dash forty-three?
So moved.
I'll second that.
All right.
Ms. Casper Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Enton?
Yes.
Mr. Nardi?
Yes.
Mr. Dundas?
Yes.
Mayor DePiro?
Yes. Okay, item thirteen on the agenda, other resolutions, uh, the first is twenty twenty-five dash forty-four. Uh, resolution to certify additional funds for twenty twenty-four for Triflex IT Solutions LLC.
That's, um, AJ's company.
Okay, and that's.
We're already at the fifteen thousand that we gave him a not to exceed of from last year. Probably cause we just didn't give him a high enough not to exceed, plus he's doing some cabling cleanup in the back room, which is part of the phone project, the, the new phone system. But in or, the auditors say it doesn't matter what line item it's coming out of, if a not to exceed has to be, we can't exceed it and pay other invoices, even if it's coming out of other budget lines. It has to be written in by resolution or in the original contract, so we're just doing this resolution in order to exceed the not to exceed that was originally written for them last reorg.
Folks have questions about this? Okay, um, does anyone like to make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash forty-four?
So moved.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none?
Ms. Casper Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Enton?
Yes.
Mr. Nardi?
Yes.
Mr. Dundas?
Yes.
Mayor DePiro?
Yes. Okay, resolution twenty twenty-five dash forty-five, this would be a resolution adopting fair share affordable housing obligations for the fourth round. Uh, Bev, you wanna present on this a little?
Yeah, this is basically, we have to by January thirty-first pass the resolution accepting our numbers. Um, so our planner and attorney for affordable housing have done a preliminary evaluation. Um, they believe that the numbers that we were given, um, are reasonable, so we have a perspective need of forty-four. Um, uh, rehabilitation, present need of four. Um, with the current plans that we have in place, we already cover, um, thirty of the credits. So they're gonna be working on, once we accept these numbers, then they're gonna be working on putting together a plan in the first and second quarter of twenty twenty-five, but we need, legally, we need to pass this resolution before the January thirty-first, um, to move ahead, so that's, that's all this is doing. Um, and if there are legal challenges, we do have a caveat in there that, you know, we could still take advantage of any reduction in the number if if that that happens.
Right, so our, our professionals are still working at the best way to to configure our plan. The affordable housing rules have, are very arcane, they have lots of specifics. Um, and so there are di- different best ways to apply the numbers, and as Bev's saying, we have some ability from our previous work in affordable housing to apply them in a beneficial way. Also, the numbers that they've given us for our obligation for round four of forty-four is an extremely low number. Um, so we've done very well, and one of the reasons we've done well is because the township has been in recent years very attentive to, uh, taking it seriously, doing good planning, uh, getting some things to happen, and as a result, um, you know, we don't have a big obligation, which is a very rare thing for municipalities around the state. Uh, the other thing to know, uh, we've been told from our professionals is, you know, if you challenge the number, you, you there's a legal ability to do that, but that brings a, you know, a microscopic, um, scrutiny of the town and has a potential for, uh, getting a higher number after the state relooks at numbers. And so, we've done very well, we have a way to, um, deal with our fourth round obligations in a way that would continue to let us keep it rural here, so, um, the recommendation from our professionals is to um, not miss the deadline, uh, to go ahead and accept the number, uh, and then continue to move forward with our professionals on how to do that.
May I just ask real quick, in case, like, cause I have a question, um, when I hear the number forty-four, does that mean how many additional we have to have in the future, or total as of now we have built? I still haven't figured that out.
So that's a, so that's an additional number, so.
Eventually an additional number.
Right, so, what what they do is they look and see whether we've missed obligations in the past, if so, we have that obligation. And then they look at the town and say, given the amount of residential construction that you've had, given the amount of commercial that you've had, given the number of population, uh, whether the population has grown or not, um, they, and they use it in a formula which says, okay, so your new obligation is, you know, and some towns near, near us have numbers in the hundreds, even thousands, right? And if you go to the big cities, it's much more than that, so once you get an obligation number sometime during the fourth round, which is a couple of years.
Right.
You have to then meet that obligation, because the Supreme Court essentially says each town has to plan to meet its own affordable housing needs, and so once we have an obligation, we set about how to do that. In the past, for example, you know, we have, um, the UAW facility coming online.
Right.
And so that's gonna provide X number of units, and so that's, you know.
Is that part of this potential forty-four or no?
So I.
That's some of the thirty that that we hit, so we're getting credit for that.
Right, so that hasn't been applied to our round three, so we're able to do that, so our forty-four then comes down, so we will have still some obligation to do, and then you have to come up and, we can get into the details of this, but you know, some of the ways include making land available, so that if someone, uh, builder came in and did it, this would be a place where they could seek to do that, and, um, but also, you know, we've looked, we've tried to look into, you know, are there secondary structures in town that folks have that they don't use? Those could be, you know, fixed up, renovated, and then put to this use. The, the, uh, landowner, you know, could then get some use out of that secondary structure, get some income from that. Uh, and it could satisfy our needs, we also have a safe house, and so that has some, you know, when we renew that lease, if we do it in a way that provides some long-term, uh, housing for that, that's something we can also use as a credit against our obligation, so there'll be a number of things in the plan, and our experts already, you're the, the attorney and planner, already looking into that and doing a spreadsheet to figure out how to.
Okay.
And we, we can have them, once they put together the draft plan, have them come and do a presentation to explain, like, how they how they work their magic and and, you know, work out the numbers to hit the credits.
I hear the numbers and I read the emails and I'm like, ah.
Yeah.
Forty-four what, like when, and do we already have them, and I, I kinda.
Right, and you look at the units, and then you can only have a maximum of this number in this category, and so it, there's, it's a lot of math going on.
More than I probably need to know.
Yeah, so it's hyper technical, but, so the big picture is, so if we have an obligation of forty-four and some can come from UAW and some so maybe half of them are ones we have to create, but whatever that works out to be, we then have to have a plan. So the next thing we'll do in several months, I think it's by April or so, April or May, we then have a general plan for how to go about doing that. And then that can be in place over time, but the, you know, the most important thing to know is, for for members of the public is if we don't come up with the number that the state or the courts tell us we have to, then we're open to, this is what I was talking about in my comments about builders can then force their way in, and they could build a gigantic facility that we can't stop because they have, you know, a ten percent of it is gonna be some affordable housing, and that's when towns lose control of their character, so this is why we've been planning so carefully to stay current on our obligations, have a plan that's acceptable to the courts and the state. Again, because that's what we need to keep our town.
I understand that, yeah, so tonight, tonight where the resolution is.
This would be to accept that the state has said our obligation for round four would be forty-four.
And our professionals agree with it, okay.
They recommend that we say yes and not bring more scrutiny or.
Sorry, Jen. I just needed to understand it.
No, no, and it's helpful, because, you know, members of the public are listening to understand too. Any other questions or comments from folks? I mean, I'll say, any, any members of the public, uh, wish to make a quick comment on this either?
Good job, Bev.
Okay, I just wanna give that opportunity in case, uh, okay, uh, questions, anything else?
Great job by Bev.
I, I think we.
Yeah, Bev's locked in on this.
Yeah.
Yeah, appreciate your work, Bev, yeah, it's a lot. Uh, so, do we get our motion and second already?
Nope.
Okay, may I have a, uh, a motion to approve?
So moved.
Resolution twenty twenty-five dash forty-five?
I'll second that.
And the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
None opposed, no, uh, abstention, go ahead.
Ms. Casper Bloom? Yes, Ms. Enton?
Yes.
Mr. Nardi?
Yes.
Mr. Dundas?
Yeah.
Mayor DePiro?
Yes. Okay, item fifteen, approval of bills, may I have a motion to approve the January sixth, two thousand twenty-five bills of the evening?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Al, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous. Approval of administrative reports, may I have a motion to approve the three administrative reports and carry the remainder until February?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous. Okay, um, open to the public, item eighteen on the agenda, uh, this is uh, for any items, not necessarily on the agenda. Any stalwarts, uh, stuff to say after all of our meetings, anything to add, yes, please.
If I can, I'll just thank Jason and his crew for the roads were gray today, much better than my driveway and patio.
Thanks for doing that, yes.
Roads look good, I don't, I never hear complaint in twenty years that I've lived here about the roads in Easthamwell, so I know that's a lot of work, um, I don't, you know, I think they pre-treated properly and I think that they, I don't even know if they had to drop a plow, if they pre-treated it properly, but maybe they did it much better than some of the other roads around, for sure.
Excellent, thanks for mentioning that, Mike, I agree, uh, yes, Rick?
Sorry to catch you off. Waste removal. Uh, a few thoughts. The electronics depot was very popular, people brought in a lot of electronics. Uh, my recollection is the same as yours, that we were able to get that done at no cost. Uh, so I would say we ought to try to schedule something for the spring if we can, cause we didn't do one last year. Um, some people have asked me about it at the recycling depot, and I said that I think it's on the radar screen and is going to happen at some point.
I think that's a real easy thing for them to do, by the way, just they make a phone call.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's, was it pretty easy?
Yeah.
And they show up, um, with their truck, and, uh, you just pull up and they'll even unload it from your car, but that was very popular.
And that also, sorry to interrupt you, but if you go to Hundreden County to do the electronic, you're sitting in your car for at least an hour waiting on line, it's pretty, it's a long, it's a long line.
Yeah, hazmat's really bad up there, I know that.
That's the problem with relying on the county, it's, it's that you wait, whereas when we had our electronics recycling depot, maybe you had one car in front of you, they were unloading, where you waited, but you weren't waiting more than a few minutes, that's the big difference. And I think there's a lot of pent up demand right now for the electronics recycling, so I think that would be great if that could be something.
That's an easy fix.
The shredding, my recollection is that we didn't get a great number of people, but we actually got a significant volume from the people that brought it in. Uh, so there was a fair amount of shredding done, it just wasn't a lot of people. And the people who did bring in the shredding really appreciated it, because you can't shred that kind of volume on a small home shredder.
Right.
And again, you can go to the county, but you wait. And when we did the shredding, we gave the residents the opportunity to stand there and watch, if they wanted, their materials being shredded. Um, and some people did that, and some people just dropped it and left. I don't recall what it cost, I don't think it was a big amount, and as I said, we had to do it to shred here. So, opening it to the residents was no additional cost, cause you had to have them come for a minimum number of hours. Um, if it's not a lot of cost, it may not be a bad thing, if it's thousands of dollars, it's probably not worth the candle, if it's five hundred dollars, it probably is worth it. Uh, and the cleanup day, I don't know what happened the last few years, cause I worked that cleanup day years ago, and we'd be going.